Good morning.
How are you?
It's a little bit after seven o'clock. We're going to go ahead and start the caucus. We have no submissions at all on it, so. Anthony, do you want to talk about?
Do. At the last council meeting, we talked about Edward Jones wanting to come and have a go door-to-door. And they presented application to the mayor. The mayor declined it. And by the ordinance, it then goes to council for their review if an appeal would be had. In talking about it at the last meeting, the mayor was open to discussing it, I think, but it was actually council that had some concerns about any kind of solicitation, any kind of door-to-door activities. And it's traditionally been that way in Poland village for a long time. So I said that I would talk to the gentleman I spoke to, Joe, who's here tonight from Edward Jones, and invite him to come forward and talk about what they do and talk about how their door-to-door solicitation would be different than others. And then let council make that determination after hearing the presentation. So Joe is here tonight, and he also had someone from Edward Jones as well. I'll let him do all the introductions. He's from the Akron branch, but they are looking to expand into our community. So without further ado, Joe.
Thank you. I'm Marak. So my name's Joe Marak. My position with Edward Jones is I'm one of 250 regional leaders in the company. So I help 56 or 57 branches, almost 70 financial advisors in a 15-county area in northeast central Ohio. So we run from Steubenville, Dover, New Philly, all the way over to Millersburg, up to Wadsworth, across Akron, Canton, Kent, Portage, and the now Warren Youngstown area, and everything in between. So we are one of the largest financial advisor or financial services companies in the country. We have more branches than any other company. We have 13,000 branches, 14,000 financial advisors, 42,000 associates, and we're a Fortune 500 company. We're a privately-held partnership, so we're not a publicly-traded company. So it's no Edward Jones stock. We don't have to set our goals and objectives based on shareholders and dividend and stock prices. So we have expanded in the Trowell County, Mahoney County area, particularly in the last seven or eight years. We have two offices in Boardman, two offices in Canfield, two offices in Austintown. And we're looking to put a branch in Poland because we feel that we have a service to provide to the people of Poland, and it's in underserved community in terms of our market share. So we applied for a permit. What we do is we go door-to-door to introduce ourselves to people in the community. We don't solicit at the door. We basically introduce ourselves, explain to people why we're in the area, that we plan on opening a branch in the town, and we just engage people in conversations to see, you know, we ask sometimes for a little bit of advice, especially if it's another business owner. We'll ask how they got started in Poland, if they have any tips or clues. We let people know who we are and what we do. We ask for their name and their phone number. We ask for permission to call them if we see anything that they might be interested in. That starts what we hope is a relationship that would lead to the acceptance in phone calls, maybe coming to our offices for appointments, learning what we do, and us learning how we might be able to help them with their retirement or investment needs. Brittany Russell is the person that has chosen Poland to build her business, and she's off to a really good start. She's working out of the Austintown branch over in Hornsburg right now. So that's her location. That's her FINRA-approved license location. It's on her business card. So we're anything but transient vendors. And what we would like to do is get a permit approved one day a week for about a five- or six-week period, so that Brittany has an opportunity to go out and meet a couple hundred people, introduce herself, and see if she can get a foothold in the community and open a branch.
Now, one of the things, Joe, you talked about that I thought would be interesting for council was the amount of revenue that you may generate, and therefore the tax part that the village would then get, income revenue.
Okay. So I don't like averages. I mean, everybody knows how averages work. We have a box of rocks here, and the average rock weighs five pounds, and there's not a five-pound rock in that box, right? But the potential for the revenue that a branch could generate is pretty good. So my branch is in North Canton, Ohio, and last year we did $650,000 worth of gross revenue, and my taxable income was in the top bracket. So that's how we hope every branch can grow. But we also have a full-time office administrator that at the beginning might only be earning $15,000 or $20,000 or $25,000 a year, but as the branch grows, then the compensation for that associate grows too. So I have two full-time assistants that last year together made $100,000. So just do the math. I mean, I don't know what your tax rate is, but the potential.
We don't have any.
You don't have any. You're speaking of an income tax.
Yeah.
We do not have an income tax.
Okay. Well, that's good. They got him with here. But there are a lot of ancillary benefits of a business like that in the community. We spend our money in the communities. We rent in the communities. We pay utilities, and we hire people to work for us in the community. So there are other advantages other than income tax that I think we would bring to the community. So again, we're just talking about one day a week for five or six weeks. There are other things that we do. We join chambers and rotaries, and we teach classes at the high school at night and at the library. We do a lot of things to get out and meet people in the community other than, you know, face-to-face prospecting. But that is the primary way that we build our new branches, is through face-to-face prospecting. And we've done it to the tune of 13,000 branches throughout the country and Canada. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about maybe how Brittany would go about doing that, maybe what a visit at the door looks like. It's very motivational.
One thing that council is concerned about, and I know I am too, I live right here, is, you know, Saturday morning or whatever it might be, and you're just kind of getting your day going, and there's a knock at your door, and you don't know who it is, you don't know why they're there. We're not root people here in Poland, so we tend to engage and talk for a minute. How intrusive, how forward would our folks have to be put through to have this process done?
So if I were to come up to your door, Anthony, I would basically say, you know, "Good morning. I'm Joe Marak. I'm with Edward Jones Investments, and I plan on opening a branch here in Poland. Do you have a minute?" You say yes, I'm going to go from there. You say no, I'm going to say I can be very brief, or I can come back another time. What would you prefer? And we go from there.
If somebody's dissatisfied with your service, who you regulate it by?
Say what I got.
If somebody's dissatisfied with your service, who regulates your activities?
Just about everybody. FINRA, the SEC, the state of Ohio, the Ohio Insurance Commission, MSRB. FINRA would be the primary regulator. So FINRA is, FINRA was the answer to any SD and SEC's major failures during the events that led up to the Great Recession. So FINRA was the new organization. They tried to consolidate some of the regulations so that they weren't spread out all over, you know, three or four different regulators. So the short answer would be FINRA would be the primary regulator. That's the National Securities Regulator Board.
Would you do this on Mondays or Fridays, over the days it would be?
So Monday through Friday. Saturday mornings would not be unusual. A lot of people work. Each community is a little bit different. Each neighborhood's a little bit different. We tend to figure out when people are home and try to be there at those times. In the communities that don't have Green River laws or non-solicitation laws, we're doing it five, five-and-a-half days a week, most of the day the first month or two that we start. Because what we do is we basically want to be able to talk to 350 or 400 people and get phone numbers so that we don't have to go to their house, so that we can call them and talk to them, or that they can come to our office. We've just found that a cold call on the phone just doesn't work. It's just not a good way to meet people. The best way to meet people is face-to-face.
Okay. Now, Anthony, if you tell them what our laws are here.
I have a copy of your.
Yeah, we talked, and initially when Mr. Marak applied, it was denied, and I said he had the right to appeal the denial to council. But then when we talked at council last time, council was actually more concerned than I thought even the mayor was about the door-to-door aspect of it. And it would be council's decision as to whether or not to grant this, in that the mayor has denied it. This is essentially the appeal, and then council would decide.
Okay, good. He's well-informed then.
Yes.
So can I ask a question? Have you approved a permit any time in the last year or two?
Door-to-door solicitation or any permit?
Just door-to-door.
Not that I approve, no.
So I mean, I'm not trying to be flippant or anything, but I'm just wondering why you can have a permit process if you're not going to approve it?
Well, Anthony, that one happened. But actually, you've never.
Our law doesn't allow for door-to-door solicitation?
I don't ever, ever.
It does if the mayor allows it. What happens is, ST would make application for solicitation. The mayor would do a background check on it and gather any information that he wished. And then he would make an initial determination of whether or not he would grant the permit. If it was denied, if he denied it, then the applicant can come before council, like they do tonight, and essentially appeal to the council members to override the mayor's veto. The thing that I told Mr. Marak was, you know, after talking at the last meeting, I didn't think the mayor had as much of an issue. It was more done on precedent, that he would never really approve.
I can't remember. There was definitely one in front of me, but he also.
But that, you know, in kind of fairness to him and fairness to you, let the council hear, you know, I didn't want to be the lawyer for, you know, the applicant. I'm a lawyer for the village. Let him come forward and say, let council decide.
We paid a $25 application fee and applied for a one-day permit at $50.
And that is, that permit is with you right now? You have not decided.
I haven't. Yeah. Paul and you didn't.
I don't ever recall in the 21 years I've had this table that we have ever approved one. And it has been mainly because the residents do not seem to like this kind of approach. And I just wonder, you know, if we do it for one person, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful venture for you and a great business, but if we do it, if we start doing it for one person, then how do we differentiate the next person who comes, and the next, and the next? You know, how do we say yes to one and not to everyone else?
Simple. We see the criteria that they've come, you know. This don't mean everybody, if we approved it, this don't mean everybody who ever comes gets an okay.
Right, Joe. And how would you explain that? That your business is good, but the next person's is not?
But it's our business to discern who can get a permit, who can't.
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking out loud for, my job is to look for compromises. And I know council talked about having something at the library, which you said you wanted to do that anyway. But we are having our celebrate Poland Day coming up in June. And I don't know how much it costs to get a booth for the vendors, but all Polans there.
That's something that we're going to do.
I did do that at Huntington Bank. I did work in Poland for a while at Huntington Bank inside the grocery store there, and we did do that. So I did have anticipation of doing something like that as well.
You'll meet everyone in Poland.
Are there going to be activities for the centennial also?
I haven't seen the schedule, but I think so.
Yeah. So there's another opportunity to meet the people in Poland.
I do plan on that for sure, but I would really like just that one-on-one interaction, if at all possible. And I am not selling anything at the doorstep. It's basically just me introducing myself and just letting them know that we're going to be in Poland, and that there's a service that we could provide. So it's nothing more, I'm not selling anything at the door, so.
What are some of the other nearby communities that you're able to do this, that you don't have to get a permit in order?
Yeah, so New Middletown, I'm actually from there. Their permit is $50 for the entire year. So I have been going there, and I have been going to Struthers. Theirs is about $25 a month. But I will say, and I know it depends on the community and everything like that, and how comfortable people feel with it, but I will say that everyone, for the most part, has been very receptive as far as coming to their doorstep and everything. They've been very welcoming, and just a lot of them have even said that it's been wonderful actually having someone face-to-face rather than a phone call. Because I don't want to be a telemarketer either, so I really want to get that face-to-face interaction, if at all possible. And I do have family and friends out in Poland. I love Poland and work out here, so I know that there's people I've served before that I would love to serve again for the future, in my future career.
Brittany chose Poland. We didn't choose it for her.
Can I ask if you approached Canfield with this?
Well, there's different offices in Canfield as well. So I prefer to stay in my area, in my zone, and kind of work on this market since it's kind of untouched right now. So there are offices in Canfield and Boardman already.
So we search for locations where we don't have an office first. We'd probably put two more offices in Canfield, but we'd like to get one in Poland first.
And you're very professional. I mean, you're the people, if we have someone go to door-to-door, that's who I want to be. But that concerns me, like you said, setting the precedent of, yeah, you guys are grateful. Who do we know's coming to the door next, and what are they going to talk about? And, you know, it's hard. Just once you do it for one, you can't discriminate against.
Oh, yes, you can.
Well, you can, but you can't.
So it's a lot harder once you do it the first time for, you know.
I will say too, the permit fee is pretty hefty, so $25 filing fee and then the $50 permit. So like I said, New Middletown's $50 for the entire year, Struthers is $25 a month. So maybe that would deter people to strong-solicing just because it is fairly expensive to do so.
So if you wanted to do it five times, that would be $250, correct? It would be $50 per time.
Yeah, well, if we were going to do our normal practice, it would cost us $300 a week to prospect in Poland. So we're not going to do that. We're going to reimburse Brittany for whatever permit fees she has to make. The company's going to pay those. But, I mean, we want to be reasonable, respectful of your wishes too. Clearly, there's a reason that you have such a stiff bar to get over, so we're not going to take advantage of that.
Okay. I can see you want to go face-to-face, but we also talked about maybe getting a night at the library.
We're going to do all those things, sir. We're going to do all those things.
Also?
No matter what. Sure. Sure. So the prospecting is probably the main activity in most of our communities because we're not faced with stiff law enforcement or fees to do it. But we join civic organizations, we get booths at the local fairs. I did the North Canton Main Street Festival for six years. I met some of my best clients there. So it's a combination of these type of activities that we immerse ourselves into in the community. Chamber Commerce or the Rotary or Kiwanis. Each community's civic opportunities are a little bit different. I found the North Canton Chamber to be the best place for me. I was on the board for six years. Those are the kind of things we're going to do in addition to trying to meet people face-to-face.
Should we ask Russ what he thinks about this?
I don't think so. He doesn't have a vote at Canfield.
I think Mr. Major.
You don't have to have a vote. It's obviously that they're, these are reputable people. That's not the.
Right. That's not the issue at all. We're not saying anything negative about them. They're very businesslike, which I think is, you know, a wonderful thing, and I'm sure that you do a great job, but we don't have any, I'm sure, concerns about them doing anything that is not professional in the neighborhoods. That doesn't seem to be what the worry is.
There's numerous financial advisor businesses in this area, and I'm just concerned that would open up a floodgate. If we did it for one, we'd have to do it for all. That would be a technique they'd all want to participate in, insurance people, et cetera, et cetera.
I can assure you, we're the only financial service company that's going door-to-door.
And don't we let you.
Now.
Don't let you.
Now. Our competitors think we're crazy. And we won't be doing this forever either. I mean, this is how we get started. So if Brittany is successful quickly, she won't be doing this in a month and a half too much. She'll be doing all those other things that we talked about that leverages her time better than one-on-one, you know, in front of groups and speaking engagements and things like that.
From what I can see, council, you know, can take this and decide, and the decision, council will be the decision.
Anthony, I'll leave you my part, in case you have any other questions for me. I'll leave you a couple.
Yes, thank you.
And we really do appreciate your time and your attention to this. I think the only thing I can say is that, you know, Brittany's going to be a great representative for Edward Jones in this town. I'm one of 500 principals with the company, so I take this very seriously. And any issues that would come up would come to me. And I just don't see it very often. And like I said, we have almost 70 financial advisors in our region, and every single one of them did this when they started, including myself. But I would be the one that would be dealing with it if something did come up. Okay. Thank you. Come and introduce yourselves. Good luck, Edward. All right, anyone else have any caucus that you'd discuss quickly?
Nobody else said? On insurance.
That's great.
We have, I don't know if we're going to have time to do this, but just do it out of finance. Maybe does somebody else have something short? Because we only have five minutes.
Anthony, do you like this pulling off our palm tree?
You know what? I approached Youngstown City. In fact, I'm working right now. I've not heard anything come back. I mean, I see councilwoman Harpley every day. I've seen the mayor a few times, and they were supposed to send someone out here to take a look. Let me.
Okay. Yeah, because with spring rolling around here, we're going to want to look at getting that down. That's the problem with this idea, because at their point, not going to want to take it till like November.
Right.
We're going to want to get rid of that palm tree probably fairly soon. That's the only drawback with this.
No, there's a drawback. I'm a drawback. Why do you want to take the tree down?
Because it needs to come down.
Yeah, who said so?
You guys.
Rebecca, or you?
Bloomberg agrees. We agree all three agree that it needs to come down.
I haven't.
That's a lot of balloon.
I haven't. I haven't thought about the tree. I don't see why they're taking that tree down.
I don't know. Well, I haven't looked at it.
Take a look at it. At the next Bloomberg meeting, then we'll make the final decision. Recommendation. It's a recommendation.
What would he say? It's diseased, or it's a problem, or?
It's just gotten too big. And what we need is, we need to replant a smaller tree that will eventually take over as the decorated tree.
Because we really don't have another tree to use for Christmas. If that one comes down.
Then what do we do?
Then we have no Christmas tree for celebration.
You stole the Christmas tree for Christmas.
Well, no, we can't use that. We cannot use that large one because there's no way that we can decorate that tree. The cost of it, and we can't have our guys growing up on that tree because of liability for that.
So is there, if Mr. Major's concerned, was there safety concerns that we're, or is it getting to the point of me?
It just doesn't fit into the point.
Okay.
It's just the way it is. It just doesn't fit into the point.
Mr. Major, I'm friends, you know, with the folks in Youngstown, and I mentioned it to the councilwoman, councilwoman Harpley, about using that tree for the Youngstown Christmas trees and having her back. That's the follow-up list today. But, you know, if council doesn't agree to it, then they can't have it. I just was going to have them take a look if they wanted. That would be a possible solution, if you will.
And our goal, Joe, was not to do something if the council does not want to do this, but that this would be a way to not have the expense of removing that tree if part of it comes down. I mean, that's going to be an expensive tree to remove, and they would pay for taking the tree down and come and get it. That removes that.
There's something wrong with the tree right now, right?
The person who, somebody when they looked at it, I don't know if it was with Lori, that mentioned that that tree had some issues.
Well, one thing, it's imposing on the other tree, imposing growth problems there. And, yeah, there was something else.
There were some issues about the growth of the tree, and which, you know, I mean, that's fine. You don't want to cut the tree down, just let nature take its course.
We're going to have another. We're going to put another tree in.
Yeah, a little tree. Take another 50 years for it to go.
Well, we really didn't want to sand it. There is a tree, but it's a plant, something substantial, so that it would start growing. But we don't have to do it.
We got no money for raises or anything, but we're going to spend money, knock a tree down and spend a couple thousand dollars, put a new tree in there, huh?
Well, we weren't going to spend money to knock it down. We were looking for an out.
Oh, yeah. That's nothing. Our guys can do that.
And our guys can take the trees down.
That's nothing. And Evergreen is easy to take down. But planting something that's of any size is going to cost a lot of money.
Joe, we'll have a final discussion about this at the next Bloomberg meeting, and then we'll bring our recommendation to council, and then we can.
That's good.
Vote on that. We can be democratic about this.
Did you sign that for you, Joe? Did you sign that for the please?
I refuse, Mr. Major. I have strong-armity. Mr. Major, I refuse. I mean, it's up to you. It's for him.
What are we doing?
It's for the commission.
Well, then, I got to read.
It's 7:30. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members. Mr. Cassatt.
Here.
Mr. Dunham.
Here.
Attorney Limmer.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Surratt.
Here.
Mrs. Yash.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Yash.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meetings.
And make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes and accept as written.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Stand.
Protocols of meetings and events to the public and news media. Bloomberg.
That would be before the next council meeting, which is the 21st, at 6:00.
6:30.
Monday before the first meeting of May, which is, what? Does anybody have a calendar, Anthony?
First time I'm on May. Is the fourth.
Fourth, at 6:30.
Legislation.
Nothing scheduled.
Police.
We just had our meeting, see if they can still be a month from now.
Streets. That would be the 21st at 6:30 here. Forward, ARB. So it's first Thursday, 7:00, Bill Joel.
Planning.
It'll be the 15th at 7:00.
Boards on Appeals.
Nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Fire District. Fire District.
Kind of a normal meeting here. We have one tomorrow, not tomorrow.
Forest Board.
Next meeting is April 28th. And Heinman.
The monthly report has been completed by Paula. She was off yesterday and today, so the new girls have both been in the office. And they're working out pretty well. They said they learned more in the last two days than they've had for the whole couple of months. So they seem to be up to speed and doing a good job. So I guess we're good now, somewhere we're at. But Paula, she needs to extend her leave or get sick. We should be able to be pretty well-staffed. And I got a letter forwarded to me from Nick from Ralph Leach and the county auditor. They're going to be going around the county, taking pictures of every house for their appraisals and verified type of building condition and stuff like that. They will be driving Tahu's. One is tan and one is navy, and they have Minnesota license plates. So if anyone notices, the Minnesota license plate blazer around, I'm still working for the county auditor.
That's all of that. Motion to accept the mayor's report?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Report from Fiscos, Mr. Sernick. Okay. Circulating around the list of bills to be paid. And on April 2nd, Mayor and I went to Farmer's Bank. We transferred $600,000 from Farmers to Star. Star's back up to the 917,000. The account at Chase is all closed down, so we're down now to Farmers, Star Permanent Improvement, and Star Law Enforcement. End of region report. Motion to accept next report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion from our deputy clerk?
Nothing.
Okay. Report from the administrator?
Dave?
Any report? Do you have a reporter, anything, Dave?
No, no reporter this time.
Okay. My favorite part of me, report from Sis?
My favorite part, Joe. I just had a procedural question on Mr. Maroc and young lady Brittany. I was just reading the process, getting to make sure that we're compliant. And I'll give you two things about the process. It goes to the mayor first, and it's not real clear as to what the criteria is, other than the mayor has discretion to start an investigation. And if the investigation comes up with anything unsatisfactory, then he doesn't issue the license. In the event the application is in order and any investigation, the applicant's history is satisfactory, approval of such application shall be endorsed. Now, the other part of this, other than the procedural part, is, from my perspective, I want to not put the mayor in a jackpot, that this is a financial agency that wants to come in and have this application, and the mayor has a financial, you know, business. I don't want anyone to say that it was denied because of anything other than what the statute of the ordinance allows. So I thought it would just be a good idea anyway, to have council decide it. So I was, I'm content, and I thought it might be a good idea, that the mayor didn't have a big hand in this process.
Absolutely.
So...
So you're saying it protected me?
Should have thought this through.
That really is true.
I could set you up. So I just think it would be better for everybody, the council.
Good thinking. You're pretty smart.
My mom always used to tell me.
You want us to take a vote on it, is that how you like to see it?
Yeah, it doesn't say in the ordinance, how you do that, just as council shall decide. But I would say you do a vote. I don't think you have to do it, you know, out vocally. I think you can even write your vote, write your decision on a vote.
I have a problem, somebody made a motion. Do you have a problem voting on it, that loud?
No problem.
Okay. But I would say you take a vote.
He wants to do it under regular motions and...
Yes, yes.
It's already come out. It's already been...
That was it. Last night I saw Anthony Magnette out one night. I said how happy council was with him. He's always been very good to us. He loves the whole village and council. And Linda.
He's helped us a lot.
So, yeah, I said, so you're Anthony Magnette. I never had met him before. I said how much he's helped us.
Absolutely.
Nice guy.
He's helped us.
Really knowledgeable for that department.
Yes.
So I hope that they're going to do some of those jobs in the past.
I hope so, too. I think he'll be okay.
So that was it. Motion to approve solicitor's report?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from Chief of Police and Street Commissioner.
I won't bore you with a long report. The only thing that we really have to discuss is, I would like to hire Nick Chacon, until the spot that was vacated by Dave Thomas, who came in the last year, the part acquisition on the street department. I waited as long as I could till he got into the really busy season. I'd like to use Nick in Dave's department.
Where'd you find him? Where's he from?
He's originally a home guy, and he worked on the street department like 40 years ago.
Oh, really?
He's 60, he's kind of semi-retired, and he's pretty fussy about his yard. And he's a certified plumber, so he'll work.
What's his name again?
Nick Chacon. Grew up on Apache.
Excuse me, Russ, that'll be for both the hind fund and the street fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Traffic controller's replaced. Anyone notice that one building built at 178 Johnson? Control's replaced, soft flash at 9. We applied for $3,685.50 in reimbursement for task force guys here. So that's about it.
Motion to accept Russ's report?
Second.
All right, report from engineer. All right, reports from absentee committees of council, finance, ways of handling insurance.
Okay, so everyone knows that right now, this time of the year, we're looking at the insurance policy. And, I don't know if I imagined this or not, Bill, did you say at one of the meetings that you toured the grounds with somebody from Whiter?
Who what?
To do an update on the values?
No, not I.
Okay.
Maybe Russ, maybe.
Hey, what?
No, I don't really know at all.
I didn't get, who, toured the grounds with who?
Whiter Insurance.
Oh.
For values. Okay, so my concern was when I got this from them, the statement of values. Fourteens for the building, the main building here in the police station included, $1,492,333. This year's statement of values, that number drops to $747,165. Yeah. So I phoned them, and that is the one that is off the most. There's a little bit off on one of the, and actually it's the old garage, but that would be made up, actually, the second, the new one, we're going from a $40,000 estimate on that one to $358,000 to 18. So that's the new one, okay? So the only thing that's really off on here that I think is a concern is the main building. When I asked her about, you know, reasoning for this, and is all property dropping all over, that they would change this that drastically later. They have a new person in place who is doing this job. And that person is using new calculations, and there are, I guess, zoning things out there that they, that are all computerized and whatever. But anyway, he came up with this number. So I said, we would like to speak with this gentleman. And we do have some questions about this. She said, now, other things that they would be looking at when they computed this, did we update wiring in the recent past? And it seems to me that we did have...
Let's get Russ.
Yeah. They asked about the roof. Of course, we're going to do the roof this year. They asked about plumbing, and whether we had maintained that. We do that as needed. Plumbing is something that we maintain as needed. They asked about smoke detectors. Do we have smoke detectors in the building?
On this building?
Not at all.
I want to give Russ the background, so he knows what...
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, we just started.
We filled you in a little bit on it?
Yeah, but they dropped the valuation by 500,000.
Big, yeah, like almost in half for this building. From a million four, I say that, a million four, almost a million five, down to $747,000. Okay, so the things that they're looking at, and we are on a historical register for this building, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So maybe that's going to help us to get that boosted up, too. Smoke detectors, they wanted to know if we had sprinklers. I said, this is an old historical building.
There's no smoke detectors, because it's not a residence. We never, we discussed it in the past, but it's not a residence, so...
Right. Obviously, they want to see smoke detectors, even if it's, you know...
We can do that.
So that would be not a very expensive thing to do. We probably shouldn't, and since we have second floor. How about wiring? When was our wiring last updated here? I remember this.
It was completely updated.
When the fire department came in and did that inspection?
No, when we did the remodeling of this room. Remember, the panel used to be here. We moved it downstairs and rewired everything to the panel. That was maybe 10 years ago. Mayor DeGeneres was still here, so it's been a while.
And we haven't had one done by the fire department since then.
I think they inspected annually, but I think all they inspected for is occupancy.
Okay.
But there's never been any issues. And wiring was completely redone.
So anyway, there's this gentleman who is going around to the different entities. We want a appointment with him, and we want, we'd like to have a little more explanation of this. We want to be sure we're covered. Because, I mean, if something happens to this building, what are we going to do with $747,000 in comparison to the number that we've been looking at?
Right, right. Did that result in a huge cut in our premium?
We don't have those numbers yet. This is just the preliminary. So I would assume that it would be quite a big cut.
I'm curious.
But, you know, we're not necessarily looking to save money on this particular item, where we want to know we have coverage for this building.
I mean, we just, I mean, we just replaced two boilers. We put doors on, which I'd like to put two more on this year, in better, safer doors.
New roof is coming.
New roof, which, I mean, that's going to be anytime.
So he is going to give me a call, and we'll set up a, would you like, I'm thinking that land and building is...
Yeah, and I think maybe the three or the four of us should meet, because Russ will have more answers, more activity than me. Set up something for here, possibly.
I think it's a good idea. I think we have to, we have to find out at least what's going on with this.
Yeah, that's, that's real.
Okay, Linda, who are you doing business with?
Whiter.
Whiter, the same guy we hired on business.
Now, remember, though, they act like a broker for us. So they give us several different companies. They try to get us the best pricing without, this is the first time we've ever seen anything like this.
Yeah, 50% cut.
Right, and, you know, maybe it's a mistake, I don't know. They have somebody new that's doing this. So that's who we're going to meet with, and we're going to have questions for him, and try to find out exactly, you know...
Good.
What's going on with it. They actually took our law enforcement policy to a different company, either last year or the year before that. We went to Scottsdale. And they were able to save us some money on that.
Yeah, it's hurt. We haven't had any claims, and I couldn't tell you how long.
I know. She remarked on that, too, so...
Years.
Right. I mean, that's a big help, but you never know what's coming, so...
Yeah.
Yet, that's why you have insurance. I have the paperwork that you fill out to all these people. So mainly, that's what we're looking at, is the difference in the statement values. Russ, I'm sure we'll go over all of the vehicles, make sure that everything is correct that's being submitted. So we had split between Scottsdale is who they took our law enforcement policy to. The other thing I'm going to do is pass these around. And these are the questions that we have to ask every year. They want to know this, and of course, we're not going to do this just out in the open because it is, technically, this would be information that would be discussed in an executive session. So they're asking for important information in regards to claims experience, and if there was anything that anybody had any knowledge of that we should be submitting, that we would be required to submit. I'm not aware of anything like that. But because they are asking that every board member, employee, volunteer, give answers to these questions, I will circulate these to you, and you can just submit them to me. And if you submit that you have any knowledge of anything like that, then we would have to include it, and I would also consult with Anthony before doing anything like that. On the actual application, we would have to submit that knowledge. So we'll pass that. If he would take one also?
Sure.
And we'll give one to Russ.
These need to be signed and returned?
Just so I know that everybody got one and did sign and see it. You'll recognize the questions when you see them. Those have not changed. So I think, you know, basically, and as soon as I have numbers, I'll make sure that you get those, too. But they need a little more information, and we need a little more information, to know what's going on with the values here, before we commit to anything. So that's it for finance. As soon as I have more information, I will let you know, and we'll make arrangements to tour the grounds. Joe, you're welcome to join us if you want to be a part of that when he comes out.
Let me know, please. Sit. Go mark. Go mark. Motion to accept. Finances. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Legislative Policy Committee?
Not him.
Police and Fire Committee?
Nothing.
Streets, sidewalks, and drainage?
Nothing.
And Bloomberg?
Nothing.
Reports from Boards, Planning Commission?
Nothing.
Boards on appeals? Nothing. Boards on deals?
Nothing scheduled.
Architecture Review Board?
Nothing at this time.
Forest Board?
Forest Board has a meeting coming up on the 28th of April. And I invited Mike Ehr from Republic. He's going to come.
He was on today, he was here. He was what? He was here talking to Russ.
Oh, good, okay.
And he didn't forget about that $5,000 either. That should be coming soon. Remember, I was going to give that to Russ.
However, in a minute, I see that you made the agreement with the township, not with Republic.
No, it's with the Board of Health.
That's with the Board of Health.
Didn't say that.
But you got paper on that?
I didn't get the minutes, I was there.
That's for 20 years.
Yep.
He'll tell you all about it.
He was here today. He brought it up, I didn't even ask him. He brought it up.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and we got garlic code on the 18th of April, 9 o'clock in the morning.
The same day as the woods cleanup?
Cleanup too, both, both. Yeah. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, and we got garlic quote on the eighteenth of April, nine o'clock in the morning.
The same day as the woods cleanup?
Cleanup, too, both of them. Yeah. Okay, that's all I got.
Question, the reporter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hind Memorial?
Nothing.
And West Reserve Fire District?
Well, they have a new, I think this was sponsored by Bob Lidle, a compensation committee that I'm part of, representing the village, for the fire department. We met once. Next time we meet is the thirteenth. They have six guys, and we got two, Lidle for the township, me for the village. Well, we're trying to find out what's going on here, you know? They haven't had a raise or anything like that for a long time, but it's a volunteer fire department. And, well, I'll keep you informed.
Okay. Question, accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reports from special committees. Communication from residents.
This is really just a question, and I don't know who in the council, Nell Berry and Gillette, Autumn Lane, is the village in an aggregate situation for our electric?
Yes, gas and electric.
Okay, we've just received notice that First Energy is dropping us, and I assumed that I was in the aggregate, but First Energy has notified me that they're no longer our supplier.
I mean, everyone's automatically in unless they opt out, is how we had it set up.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know, who is our supplier for electric?
I believe it's Dominion. Whatever Dominion's rates are, we're supposed to be three to six percent less than their lowest published rate.
Dominion for the electric?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dominion, First Energy for the electric.
Well, it's First Energy that just notified us that they weren't doing it anymore, that we now would be receiving directly from Edison, and I didn't know whether the aggregate was changing.
No, I've got nothing to say that. Sometimes they just send out letters that are from different gas suppliers that are, they make it sound like it's the same thing, but it's not.
Well, it's been in the newspaper, I think, that Edison, because of cost, or First Energy, because of the costs, no longer are gonna be providers, but you automatically, you won't lose your electricity, you'll just automatically go to Edison rather than First Energy.
I'll find out, I'll call Mark Burns of the Hudson, is our guy, I'll find out from him.
Okay, thank you.
If you want.
This is Gillette, why don't you call him? You got a letter, call him, find out why.
I don't think they offered me a number, but I can look it up, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, they, it's been in the paper and the letter explaining that it was because of the additional costs now, they could no longer afford to do that.
If I may, it just, it makes me wonder why, we've got, what do we have, thirteen or twelve different village residents, and you're the only one who's gotten it. It just causes me to, maybe it's the cynic coming out, but it causes me to pause.
Actually, I got, I got a phone call, it was, it's been a couple weeks ago, asking me about the rates and taking, and moving, and I explained to them that we're in, communities in aggregate, and the lady that I was talking to just said, oh, okay, thank you.
So you said they hang up.
I had a phone call and told somebody the same thing, I don't know if that was gas or electric.
This was electric.
I just said we're in an aggregate, and so, oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly, it's the same thing.
Get away from the phone.
Try to promote it.
But I'll find out for you, Mrs. Todd.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, any new business? Any old business? Motion, ordinances, resolutions?
There is a motion to consider the application by Edward Jones representatives for solicitation permits.
Second.
All in favor?
What, what, what do you, you just want to have an elected vote?
Yes, yes would be you're approving the permit, no, you're opposing it.
So all in favor would be yes, and any opposed would be no. So all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, wait, what, what was my eye?
I don't know, what do you want me to do?
I'm in favor of it.
You're in favor of it?
Yeah.
All right, so you were yes, and everyone else is no, correct?
Okay.
So four to one. Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
I can make a motion to appoint Nick Chacon for part-time street physician.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anything else, any motions, ordinances, resolution? Second and third readings. Who's gonna be Chris's child? Presentation of the bills.
I hope some bills we pay.
Wow.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media? Remarks by counsel, Mrs. Sernick.
Nothing.
Mr. Dunham?
No comment.
Mr. Cassett?
Okay.
Mr. Dunn? Mr. Major?
Well, we all know that Dick Ames died. Does everybody know what happened to him?
No.
Okay. All right, I was after him to get information to us so we could make a resolution for him, you know, for a long time, but he never did it. So I don't know, I think we should do something.
Yeah, we should.
So I'll talk to his wife and find out, you know, get some stuff together, and we'll make a resolution. Thank him, Chris. Long service.
Absolutely. Seven fifteen each, seven. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?